February 10th, February 10th, 2021 to order. We're experiencing some serious weather lately and cold and all the folks that are out in the weather working, so if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. If Alderwoman McGinnis would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Brian Krupp, our city clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here until 6 o'clock.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
Ann Ambrose?
Here.
Ten? President, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. So, ladies and gentlemen, as we begin the city council meeting tonight, I welcome everyone in attendance and all those who are viewing on respective electronic devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind you're sharing your thoughts with both the folks here and all Davenporters and everybody in the region. We're happy you're participating in the city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to help Davenport be a great place to live, work, and be safe, stable, and welcoming. If you do have an electronic device, especially here, if you please put it on silent or turn it off so it just simply doesn't get in the way of somebody talking, all right? If you want to address the council on a specific item, please come to the podium if you're here, give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you, and we ask everyone to please observe the common accepted ideas of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you, everyone, for coming. So, will an alderman please move approval of the city council meetings for January 27th? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, that passes. City Administrator, Ms. Corey Spiegel, is there any update?
Just a reminder that city facilities will be closed Monday at observation of President's Day, and as the mayor alluded, we have about another week of sub-zero and frigid weather ahead, so we will continue to work on clearing the streets and making sure our city is passable until Mother Nature would like to cooperate with us.
Thank you, Ms. Spiegel, and just quickly, as it gets really cold, looks like Sunday and Monday, please look out for our elderly folks and our young children and your pets. This is interesting for February that we're this late in the season and the cold is coming, so just be careful and aware. Thank you. Will an alderman please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for February 3rd, 2021? Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Good, report's approved. We have a couple of appointments, one proclamation, so Historic Preservation Commission, Karen Miranda, new appointment. Is there a motion? Motion is second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you, Karen Miranda, for her willingness to serve our great city on the Historic Preservation Commission. We have one proclamation this evening, American Heart Health Month, and that'll be taken care of by Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will read the proclamation. Whereas, American Heart Health Month is an opportunity to remember loved ones that have been lost to the deadly disease, raise awareness of the signs and symptoms of heart disease, and commit to a lifestyle that improves overall health, and, whereas, as stated by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, heart disease is the leading cause of death in the United States, causing about 1 in 4 deaths each year. The term "heart disease" refers to several types of heart conditions. In the United States, the most common type of heart disease is coronary artery disease, which can lead to heart attacks, and, whereas, through technological advances and scientific research, we have learned a remarkable amount about the cause of heart disease. It is known that smoking, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, lack of physical activity, obesity, diabetes, and prediabetes are some of the leading factors that can contribute to our risk for heart disease, and, whereas, most importantly, it is never too late or too early to improve your heart health. Small changes such as committing to a healthy diet and regular exercise can make a significant impact to your heart health, and, now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, mayor, and the city council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as American Heart Health Month, and encourage all citizens of our community to join with millions of Americans in helping to support the efforts and awareness of Heart Health Month. The city of Davenport Skybridge displayed the color red Monday, February 1st, through Sunday, February 7th, in recognition of Heart Health Month dated this 10th day of February 2021. I move the proclamation.
Have a motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? All right. Here to accept the proclamation is Ryan Lee with the American Heart Association. Cool.
Extra photograph.
I know.
Smiling through the mask.
Exactly.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the American Heart Association. We appreciate all that you do to help us continue to spread awareness, and the Skybridge looked great last week, and we have shared that across the entire state and region. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next is petition communications from both council and mayor, so I just have one quick, we received the city recognition by the United States Department of Commerce for the wonderful work during the census, and then a nice little thank you and recognition signed by the director of the U.S. Census Bureau to the city, and they sent it to me, but I think everybody's aware, but if you're not, my goodness, this recognition, this work, city staff, Tiffany and Samantha and others that really did all the work, but to one of our colleagues, Alderwoman McGinnis, who every single day was banging doors and doing pamphlets and calling people and leading, and the work that got down here is because of her, so this is a nice recognition for the city, we'll take it certainly, but we need to give her another round of applause for this. And so, having said that, try and be warm, and Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to Samantha Torres and Nevada Lemke for helping me put on a board meeting last evening via go-to meeting. They were able to get the message out, get everything set up for me, and so everything went seamless and smooth, so I thank them again. And second, I just wanted to make a brief comment about one of the items on the consent agenda, just make some statements here. After thinking after last week about the resolution to oppose Senate File 159, I believe we keep it on a consent agenda. I am generally supportive of this resolution as I made mention of last week, however, I will end up abstaining from voting this evening. I do feel there is a little bit of conflict of interest with me being a part of the Assumption Foundation Board. However, I did want to make a couple of points, as I mentioned, in case there was any thought to make changes to what we as a body are advocating or people in general advocate to our legislators in Des Moines. You know, one of the things is this bill does call for $1,000 tax credit for all families, whether they are public or non-public schools for adjusted expenses, or, excuse me, educational expenses, you know. For those of a certain income level, they could receive a refund, you know. This is something that, should the bill get voted down in Des Moines, you know, some families that, you know, may need some assistance for educational expenses might miss out on. Also, the creation of an ESA with this bill directs funds to the families, so families can make a choice of how they choose to use their tax dollars. I think we forget that, should this bill go through, that there isn't going to be a mandate for students to automatically leave public schools or provide, you know, open enrollment opportunities out of Davenport School District, rather, you know, this bill, you know, has some opportunities for those who are not, you know, receiving the services they need from their school to have a choice to attend a school that meets their needs, and the ESA can serve as a vehicle for them to do that when the financial resources aren't available to them. Hopefully, you know, our Davenport schools will continue to meet the needs of our students so that their families don't feel that they need to go elsewhere to receive a good quality education. And then, kind of getting into speaking about private schools, where, you know, we must remember, not all private schools are faith-based schools, even though in the city of Davenport, you know, current majority of those private schools are faith-based. You know, for those who call for a separation of church and state, you know, or, you know, kind of make some kind of mention of the faith-based schools having, you know, maybe a little negative connotation, you know, remember, these faith-based schools in Davenport educate approximately 1,500 students. They employ, you know, hundreds of people and are all done without any cost to the community. You know, depending upon, you know, the faith-based school in Davenport, you know, 1/3 to 1/2 of those students are receiving some sort of tuition assistance, and this is all generated privately, you know. Should this bill pass through our state house, you know, the schools will continue to require private donations to, you know, help educate these students and provide opportunities, but this bill does look to create a potential, you know, financial opportunity for those that desire to attend private schools or faith-based schools but have some financial restrictions. And so, you know, I want to end this with, you know, Davenport, we need strong schools, both private, or, excuse me, both public and non-public, you know. Again, I am for keeping this on the consent agenda, I am for advocating for our school district, but I thank you for the opportunity to just make a couple of those comments.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Doorman?
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. As you guys may or may not have been aware of, our city website recently has been down, but it is back, and so are the fifth ward meetings, and I'll have my next one on Tuesday, and the topic will be our website, so it came back just in time. I would've had to scramble to figure out a new topic if that was still down. But Tiffany Thorndey in our admin for council and the mayor, she will be walking us through the website, and it's something that even after a year of being on city council, I still sometimes struggle where things are located within that, so she's a great resource to walk us through that and be able to help better explain all of that. So, I hope you can attend virtually or here, it will be in City Hall next Tuesday at 6:30, so either in person here or virtually through a streaming online, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow night at 6 o'clock is my virtual ward meeting, and Clay Merritt will be talking about CIP projects, capital improvement projects of interest to the eighth ward, including ones outside the eighth ward, and those always bring up good questions, so I encourage everybody to come, and again, you can just go to the city website, which, as Alderman Doorman just said, is up, yay, to find out how to connect. Just scroll down to the calendar, and it'll be there, and I look forward to seeing a lot of eighth ward folks there. I also want to remind people that the CDC is recommending either a very high-quality mask or wearing a paper mask with a cloth mask over it, double masking. We do have some of the high-spreading variants here in Iowa, and we want everyone to stay safe, so, thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor, just a few things. I too will be having a ward meeting on Tuesday, it's going to be Monday, but that's a city holiday, so it will be February 16th, Tuesday at 6:30. It will be virtual, and you can again find information on how to link on on the city's website. Also wanted to make sure everybody knew that the USDA food box distribution has started up again, and I wanted to thank a few people, the Shabori family is, Shinburi family is very involved in bringing this and making this happen, but we, they've lost their private site where they were unloading through the fall, and so last week was on the street, which is scary because there were lots of people, so our Modern Woodman Park, or the Foy and Keen Lot in front of Modern Woodman Park will be where the truck will be, and those pickups are on Fri-, will be Fridays, and the public pickup starts at 11:00 a.m. until the food is gone. It's a huge tractor trailer, it's very fresh, all the five food groups, milk, cream cheese, all kinds of really good things. You don't have to have any kind of ID, if you know people who need this, you know, come by and pick up some boxes for them. They keep going until they run out of food, and I want to thank Alderman Dunn, who sort of helped facilitate this, supervisor Ken Crokin, who got involved to make this happen, Steve Barons with the Riverfront Approval Commission, Nicole Gleason's folks who are helping clean up the area, or helping to get the snow down, but in any case, really appreciate everybody's help on this. This will be going on here until further notice, so this is every Friday, 11:00 a.m. Enter the driveway on River Drive just across from Western, and then they will exit, people will exit from another exit, so that's where the entry will be. So, that will be going on. I also wanted to, something that I found out last week that shocked and saddened me was the loss of Lynn Cochran, who was the president of Scott County, the Scott County Community College. She passed away in January, I did not realize this until last week. I did not know Lynn well, but she was a member of our Historic Preservation Commission, but she also was very engaged in many things in the city. I think she was on the ZBA commission as well, perhaps. Wonderful person, very engaging, very enthusiastic about many things going on in Davenport, and she will really be missed, so condolences certainly to her family. And the last thing is, I just want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day, and my Valentine hearts are going to Public Works and all the hard work they've been doing with cleaning up all of our streets and working very hard to do that, I know they're working hard, so we love you all, okay? So, that's, everybody have a great Valentine's Day. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis, love is a good thing. Alderman Ambrose, speaking of love.
Alderman McGinnis, you truly are a warrior. Thanks for everything you do. Yeah, I want to apologize to our Civil Rights Director and the Civil Rights Commission, along with Alderman Peacock, I wasn't able to attend yesterday's work session on some of the funding concerns of our Civil Rights Department, you know, after our budget session, I thought staff had addressed that issue, but I just, it's important that everybody knows I do support working with the Civil Rights Department and help them with their staffing, so, for the record, for the other aldermen. And I also want to thank our great governor for lifting the COVID mandates, thought they were pretty outrageous in the first place, so, thank you, Governor Reynolds.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll just add one comment, that the restrictions for the city facilities, et cetera, still stay in place through February, and the schools are still doing masks, so that's a good thing, thank you. All right, moving on to individual items on the discussion agenda. Wonderful story here that you're going to hear in a second. First consideration, ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $10,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021 Alpha, and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. So, I'm going to ask our finance director, Ms. Mallory Merritt, to come up and provide some comments, and then she has a guest speaker for your education environment today.
Mallory Merritt, CFO. Hi, Mayor and Council. Last fall, I was before you at our annual bond sale, letting you know that we did have very favorable, or we had favorable results, and today, I am happy to tell you that we've had very favorable results. This does take months of preparation to get us to this time, so I do want to thank the mayor, our city administrator, and the accounting team for all of their work on getting us to today. Also, a very special thank you to our financial advisor, John Birmaster, he's on the line today to share the results and is very instrumental in managing this process for us and making sure that we're doing everything just right. So, with that, I'll turn it over to John.
All right, very good. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, Mr. Birmaster, please.
All right, very good. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you remotely this evening. As Mallory indicated, we did solicit proposals from underwriters today, and we had a refunding opportunity here of the 2013 bonds, and when we had identified this savings opportunity way back last fall, we had targeted around $572,000 worth of savings. I'm pleased to tell you that interest rates not only didn't go up since last fall, they've actually gone down a little bit more, and so today, you should have in front of you or on your system there, a result of sale. We ended up getting eight bids from underwriters, there's 39 different underwriters located throughout the United States, I was very pleased by the number of bids that we received, as well as the number of underwriters participating. And you can see in the upper left-hand corner that Moody's, or, excuse me, Standard and Poor's did once again reconfirm the city's AA rating, and just a couple highlights, if you have an opportunity to review that report, I think I would encourage you to do that, but just giving you a executive summary, is they cite four things that I think personally are the strength of the credit of the city. They highlight strong management, strong budgetary performance, strong budget flexibility, and very strong liquidity, and so that speaks to all of the decisions that staff and the councilmen are making, and women are making, as you're preparing your budgets and going forth, and that really results in a lot of interest in your bonds and also results in very favorable results. So, you can see on the first page of the results of sale, BOK Financial Securities, they came in with a bid proposal, true interest cost of 0.6398%, and just to remind folks, this is a refunding of the 13 series, so we kept exactly the same term, this is 11-year term, so the city of Davenport now is borrowing over 11 years at 0.6398%, which is just unheard of and very remarkable. You can see that the bonds did come in with, at a premium bid, so after sizing, we were able to decrease the size down to $8,175, and it also should be noted that in addition to trying to refund some existing bonds with new bonds, the city staff, Mallory's department, along with her staff, we reviewed a couple of the smaller pieces that were associated with this loan, primarily in the Tiff districts and the drainage department, and they had some extra cash, excess cash lying around, so we were able to find this $695,000 of cash that they were just going to go ahead and pay those bonds off, and not, and we didn't refund those, so that's why we're basically paying off $9,905, and we're selling $8,175, and a piece of that is we're using some cash to pay that down, which results in a lot of savings in and of itself. And then, if you want to flip through this, there's a lot of different underwriters in here, and then if you go to the very last page, this is where the exciting news is. You can see here, this is, she here compares the old debt service to the new debt service, and with the combination of the savings, as well as the city's funds on hand, the city tonight is reducing your debt service payments over the life of these bonds by $1,931,000, and the savings of that is about $1.2 million, and so on a present value basis, so if we back out that sources of money, as you can see there, that we're actually saving on a net present value basis, $1,177,000, and again, we had targeted $572,000 last fall, interest rates stayed stable, they actually decreased a little bit, so now we're getting almost, we're getting almost double the savings that we had hoped. So, this is a pretty good savings, we always look at this as a percentage of the refunded par amount, and we, and the industry always likes to get at least 3% on these, and PFM always targeted at least 5, and so I'm pleased to tell you tonight that the city is saving 11.88%, double our great favorable results in terms of savings here this evening. So, with that, I'll open up any questions that you may have, and PFM would recommend that you award this to BOK Financial Securities with a par amount of $8,175 and a true, adjusted true interest cost of 0.6461%.
Thank you, Mr. Birmaster. We'll do an amendment here in a moment, but there might be some comments, I certainly have some, so, huge credit to our city staff, our city administrator, and our Ms. Spiegel, and our finance director, Ms. Merritt, and of course, John Birmaster, thank you, and please express our thanks from the city to PFM and all of the people that you work with, and the council, and everyone else. I've been on council a long time, I've talked to a lot of cities, I don't know that anybody's done this, double over the target that we believed that we were going to save, I mean, double that, over a million dollars, point six, I've never heard the term "point something" without a number in front of the decimal, that's just unheard of, almost over a million dollars saved, so the citizens really need to be proud, and then the comments that S&amp;P provided to us and the strong budgetary stance that our city has. So, again, thank you, Mr. Birmaster, thank you to staff, especially our finance department who worked very hard on this and achieving this for 11 years, we'll have this rate, so if there's other council folks that would like to talk, if not, well, I think we owe an, I apologize, who? Ms. Merritt? Who are we pointing at? Oh, I, yeah, I'm getting there, I'm just, yeah, I'm like, we're pointing at the air. Okay, it's Wednesday and I'm waiting for my omelet, so I apologize for that. I'm just so amazed at this number, my head's not right, so, I apologize for all that, so, it's just amazing, and I think we just need an applause for all the work that this team put together to get this, so. Now, I got the pointing part. Is there any public with comment? Hearing, seeing none, very good. I'd love to have an alderman move and second this, unless Ms. Merritt, do you have, we'll do a discussion here in a second, Ms. Merritt? Motion and a second, Ms. Merritt?
Yep, at this time, we do need to move forward with passing this on first consideration, that would be the staff request, just so that we can actually close the transaction. So, with that, we would need you to substitute the ordinance that was initially in your packet with the one that you have in front of you, and that ordinance reflects all of the sale details that were just shared by Mr. Birmaster, and then from there, you're back on the original.
Roger that, I'll accept a motion for the substitution. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, then the substitution's on, now we're back on the original. Any other discussion from any alderman? Hearing and seeing none, very good. Brian, if you please call the roll for the substituted information.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ambrose? Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ann Dunn?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, first consideration passes, moves on to second, but we have a recommendation to suspend the rules and pass on currently the second and third, so I'll accept a motion for suspension. There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose? Lee? Dunn?
Yes.
Ann Doorman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, that, the rules are suspended, so now we can, I'll accept a motion for passage on second and third consideration, there's a motion? And a second. Any discussion? Very good, Brian, roll call.
Dickman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose? McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ann Doorman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, that now passes, and great job again, so.
Lisa, yes.
Okay. Ten yeses, Your Honor. Got you, Ms. Alderwoman Lee, got you, Roger that. Very good. Okay, thank you for that awesome report, and the guy in the- Okay, thank you for that awesome report, and the guy in the cyclone hat, I hope, got all that information in the back corner, thank you. If he had a Hawkeye hat on, I know he'd get it, but, you know. So, anyway, now we're on to the next area, consent agenda, per Alderman Jobchin's notes, we have that information, but is there a motion for approval consent? There's a motion and a?
Second.
Second, any discussion, so, roll call, please, Brian. Missed my button, sorry. Lee?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes to everything, with the exception of 13, I'm abstaining.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
I will abstain from 24, yes to everything else.
Ambrose? Okay? Condon?
Yes.
Ann Dickman?
Yes.
10 yeses, and then all the notes that I got written down.
Yep, we're fully aware of the notes, thank you for that, okay, consent agenda is approved, so the next item, is there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are for this, there are not for this evening, is there any public with business? Pausing. Okay, very good, there's not, are there any other reports, Ms. Spiegel? There are not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're adjourned, be safe, stay warm, take care of the people that need to be taken care of, have a great day. Thank you for the great report tonight.